Everyone, Kathy, joining us?
Oh, yeah, I was just getting up.
We're late.
Yeah, we have.
Let's go. We've got a lot of ground to cover.
I have crib notes.
Crib notes, huh?
Barbara wanted to, said she wanted to speak for eight to five minutes. We've got time.
That's fine.
And then we'll go to, this is the motion we have to make on the Villas Way.
One.
We didn't know what he did or not.
Of course, I'm gonna be here.
I kept us guessing.
It's, you know.
You're so worried.
I show up.
I barely slept.
You know? You know?
You didn't do anything like tax.
Come to the party, trust to kill. Let's go.
Let's go.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, March 25th, 2024 Groveland Board of Selectmen meeting. It is.
Oh, move it closer.
Camera guy. I'm on.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
The audience.
Again. We're having technical difficulty. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, baby.
I'm a few bars.
Hello.
I heard that.
Okay. Rock and roll. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Groveland Board of Selectmen Monday, March 25th, 2024 meeting. I'll introduce members of the board and our town administrator, Rebecca Oldham. Selectwoman Kathy Castren Ellis on my far left. Jason Naves, Selectman. Mark Brento. Eddie Watson, is he remote? Edward, how are you in Florida? And I am Daniel McDonald, your chairman for this evening. Please join us in saying the Pledge of the Allegiance.
Pledge of the Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First up, we have, we have some public comments this evening. Who wants to take the podium first? No?
Barbara Sanborn, I think, is gonna go first, or no, she's not.
Please introduce yourself for everyone. Good evening.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Alyssa Lee. I am a Groveland resident at 5 Georgia Street, and I am the Director of the Council on Aging here in Groveland. I will just be following up on a letter that I had sent to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator in the evening hours of March 22nd in regard to pay equity across the town of Groveland. Specifically, I was able to look at 18 individuals. So first, want to thank the Finance Board, the Town Administrator, for doing remarkable work in developing a balanced budget for FY25. I know it was a great concern for all of us, so really appreciate that due diligence there. I, however, did want to bring to your attention a concerning issue regarding compensation, specifically concerning the COA Assistant Director, Nisha Burke. I want to acknowledge that while my analysis may not encompass every employee, I do feel that it is a representative portion of the workforce. Additionally, I understand that there may be concerns about the official adoption of the Collins Study. However, regardless of the formal adoption, its influence on our compensation decisions is apparent in the documents I provided to you in Excel form. This brief analysis has identified concerning trends. Out of the 18 Groveland positions analyzed, there was only one individual negatively impacted, the COA Assistant Director. Notably, this person, this individual, Nisha, happens to be a person of color, is female, marks her 20-year anniversary with the town this June, but unfortunately, her compensation falls below the minimum of the town's general fund, not just the minimum of the Collins Study paid through the town's general fund, but drastically so, 40.39% below the penetration rate. We are urging you, as the Select Board, to increase the Assistant Director's annual salary by $8,067.03 from the $58,541.85 currently listed in the FY25 budget. We ask that this minimum be funded from the general fund, as is the case with everyone else's minimum salary. I understand the importance of fiscal responsibility, noting that it is not within my purview to develop the town budget. However, drawing from my experience in managing personnel budgets, I would recommend evaluating potential areas for reallocation, as I know it lasts for me in formal meetings. For this instance, a logical area to consider would be reviewing any new positions the town is considering hiring. And on that payroll or on the salary budget for FY25, there's a new role, Administrative Assistant, listed under the Town Administrator line. In this analysis, I found that this position for the salary penetration is 185.22%, indicating overcompensation. If the intention is to pay top tier, there's room for adjustment by reducing the salary to the appropriate level. 75% of that range would allow for significant savings. 100% of the classification, to be clear, would still provide for significant savings. This approach could provide sufficient funds to cover the proposed salary inke threes for the Assistant Director while still allowing flexibility in the future adjustments within the FY25 budget, as well as to hire the new position. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Who's up next?
Good evening. Barbara Sanborn, 15 Parker Road. I'm here in a dual role tonight. First of all, I'm the Director of the Board for the Council on Aging, and I fully endorse and approve all this's comments and recommendations tonight. In that role as the Chair, we were asked, as I understand all departments were, to create worst-case scenario cuts, should there be need for that in the FY25 budget. After many, many sleepless nights and tears, we did do that. We presented a $42,198, I believe, worst-case scenario budget cuts, which decimates the budget for the Council on Aging. If we did not have to do that, it was one of the worst decisions I've ever had to make, and I hope we never have to do that again. And then I'm also here in a role tonight as a taxpayer, 47, as I said, 47-year resident of the town of Groveland. I would like to suggest that in light of continued financial constraints and the possibility of asking for yet another override, if not in FY25, then the possibility exists for future years. In order to fully fund budgets, that contracted town employees also be held to the same 2% salary increase as all other town employees. I certainly recognize that in order to attract and to keep qualified staff and to allow all staff to feel valued for the jobs they perform and perform very well, that the town needs to compensate all employees fairly. But that applies to all employees, not only contracted staff. In addition, as mentioned, there is a significant increase in the FY25 budget for the Essex Regional Retirement System Annual Assessment that the town pays. That assessment is based on total salaries that the town pays to all eligible staff except for teachers. So that's police, fire, Town Administrator, and employees of all staff, eligible, benefit-eligible staff members of all town departments. So all salary increases contribute to the increased assessment, and salary increases of 2% increase the Essex Regional Assessment even more so. For the FY25 budget and beyond, I would respectfully ask that the Board of Selectmen not consider and certainly not approve salary increases in excess of 2% for contracted employees unless the same percentage is approved for all staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Think we had a third person?
Elizabeth Coniff, 211 Seven Star Road, and also the Town Clerk. My point is also the budget that was discussed at last week's finance meeting. When the Council on Aging was asked to present a worst-case scenario, it appeared that the Finance Board had no idea that they were asked to produce that budget, and that budget cut out the position of Nisha Burke completely. And so for well over a week, Nisha did not think she had a job after June 30th. And for the town to present a budget that includes a brand-new position for $77,000 for a Town Administrator and not even respect or represent, or respect, I should say, the 20-year position of your Assistant Director for a decent salary increase is just, it's sad. So that's my point here tonight, that please respect your employees that have been here and think about the budget tonight.
Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing. Is it the proper time? Pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 82, Section 21 and 22, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing. It says on March 11th.
Mr. Chairman, it's a continuation, so we don't have to do the hearing part.
All right. It's a continuation of the proposed road layout on Villas Way for the petition of Al Coolard, as prepared by Michael Sergi, PLS, dated February 28, 2024. Publicans, welcome to attend and give comments. So who's up on that?
Hi, my name's Annie Schindler. I'm the Town Planner and Conservation Agent. When I was before you guys, two weeks ago, the Highway Superintendent had not yet signed off on, or provided a letter recommending the street for acceptance. There was an issue with a portion of the sidewalk and an issue with a manhole cover. Those have both been remedied as of last week, and the Highway Superintendent provided his recommendation. The Planning Board met right before your meeting this evening, and they also voted to recommend this for town meeting. So I'm here tonight in hopes that the Board of Selectmen will also recommend the laying out of this roadway at town meeting.
I can make a motion?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to recommend the laying out of Villas Way.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Mark? Kathy? Jason? Ed? Any further?
It's a roll call.
No, no.
No. Take a roll call. Ed?
Yes.
Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Passes unanimous. Thank you.
Great. Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Public hearing's closed. Discussion and possible vote, one. Approve of the field use permit for the use of Pine's Recreation Area softball field by the Pentucket Regional High School varsity softball team. Dan Thornton, it's a request from March 19th, 2024 through March 23rd, and March 25th, 2024 through March 30th. Is there a motion on that?
I'll make the motion to approve the field use permit of the Pine's Area softball field by Pentucket High School varsity softball team for March 19th, 2024 through March 23rd, 2024, and March 25th, 2024 through March 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Edward?
Oh, roll call.
Yes.
Why is that a roll call?
Because he's remote. Sorry. We have to do everything roll call.
Everything's roll call?
Yeah.
Or just Ed?
No, everything. Yes.
Ed's a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Unanimous passes. Number two, approve the field use permit for the use of Pine's Recreation Area baseball field by Pentucket Regional High School JV baseball team, Dan Thornton, for March 19th, 2024 through May 31st, 2024. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve field use permit of a Pine's Recreation Baseball Field through Pentucket Regional High School JV baseball team for March 19th, 2024 through May 31st, 2024.
Is there a second? Second, then? Any discussion? All those in favor? Roll call. Edward?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Unanimous. Number three, approve the field use permit for the use of Pine's Recreation Area softball field by Pentucket Youth Softball League, Karen LaBelle, for games and practices from April 1st, 2024 through June 22nd, 2024. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the field use permit for the Pine's Recreation Area softball field by the Pentucket Youth Softball League for games and practices from April 1st, 2024 through June 22nd, 2024.
Is there a second? Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call. Edward? Tired, working on three hours' sleep.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
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 Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Passes. All right. Next up, approve the field use permit for the use of Pine's Recreation Area baseball field by the Pentucket Babe Ruth League, Jeff Meisner, from April 15th, 2024 through August 1st, 2024. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the field use permit of the Pine's Recreation Area baseball field by the Pentucket Babe Ruth League from April 15th, 2024 through August 1st, 2024.
For a second? Any discussion? Roll call. Edward?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Passes. Approve the special events and property use permit for the use of Pine's Recreation Area Pavilion by the North Shore cyclist Oliver Lowen for the Road Cycle Picnic on September 29th, 2024 through, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for the special event and property use permit for the use of the Pine's Recreation Area Pavilion by North Shore cyclist for the Road Cycle Picnic on September 29th, 2024, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Second. Second, any discussion? Roll call. Edward?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Unanimous. Number six, Merrimack Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, MVMPO, sub-region three representative. It's a Town Administrator issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Alyssa?
In your memo that the Town Planner in Georgetown, John Cashell, is no longer in his position, so he will be stepping down, and therefore, we need to have a new representative. And the Town Administrator in Bauxford has stepped up, and so per their regulations, we needed the board to be made aware that the sub-region will now be represented by that individual, and if there was any concerns, to notify the MBPC so that they could act accordingly.
I have no objection.
You have no objection?
Nope. I read the letter. It's fine.
Jason?
I'm good.
Edward, you okay?
We don't have to vote, right?
Yes, okay.
No issues? Mark? All right. Moving right along. Number seven, 2024 elections. Candidates' Night. Selectman McDonald, I must be may. We've got a Candidates' Night. Listen to the people, see if they're good for you. See if they're good for our town. So we have a letter here. I'll read it to you. Says, Candidates' Night, join your neighbors and meet the candidates running for an elected position within our town as they share their views on important community issues. It's at Groveland Town Hall, main meeting room, this one, April 24th at 6:00 PM, and Joseph Demore is going to be the volunteer moderator. And the event will also be broadcasted on our Government Access Channel 8. Tune in. Be informed. Pick the right person, persons. All right. Next up, eight. Approval of field use permits, property use permits, and special events permits. Selectman, Selectwoman Castren Ellis. What do you got?
So, no, that was a request, and you said you would put on the next agenda that if we wanted to take a vote to allow the Town Administrator to just approve these permits because she takes care of the allocation of those resources and then just keep us updated as part of our regular meeting like she does on the warrants, we wouldn't need to keep voting these blindly because she basically checks to see that everything's been, fits in, that the schedule is kept. She keeps the master schedule. We don't.
That's it.
Okay. So do you need a motion?
Make a motion to allow our Town Administrator to handle use permits.
Use of town facilities, would it be, or what do you want?
Field use permits and property use permits and special use permits, all three we have.
Okay. So make a motion for the Town Administrator to be able to approve the field use permits, special use permits, and what was the third one?
Special events.
Special events? Is that everything? That's my motion.
Does that cover everything?
It does.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Edward?
Nothing.
Kathy?
No.
Jason?
No.
Mark? Myself. No, I think it's efficient as long as we're communicated, so, you know, just let us know what happened.
We have to take a vote.
Or maybe no, let us know what's coming up, I guess?
I would definitely notify, and I would also bring before the board anything that was of a large scale, anything over 50 people in attendance, obviously, or would impact the town in any way, shape, or form, I would still bring that before the board. But some of the smaller items, such as the field use and things of that nature, I would put a memo together each meeting and provide you with that updated information so that you knew who was utilizing the properties and where and when.
So I just garden variety permits, and not like, you know, Woodstock comes to Groveland or something, you know? Prove 500,000 people showing up.
Very much so.
All right. Was there a second? There was? All right. All those in favor? Oh, roll call. Edward?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
All right. Passes. Number nine, review 2024 Community Preservation Articles for Town Meeting. Mike Dempsey, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
What do you got?
Well, this year, this is Mike Dempsey for the Community Preservation Committee. So this year, the Community Preservation Committee did quite a bit of work to review some projects, and we were able to narrow it down to seven potential projects that need to be approved at this year's town meeting. And so I'm here tonight to ask you to place these on the annual town meeting warrant, and I just wanted to give you a quick update on what they were and the dollar amounts and categories for each one. So the first project that's proposed is a community garden design phase, and so this project is Phase 1, that's going to create a plan to convert the old dog park into a community garden space, including costs for raised beds, infrastructure, and permaculture. The Groveland Community Garden will promote gardening as a recreational activity, enhance sustainability through growing food, promote community educational and intergenerational opportunities, and also beautify the pines. This project is only designed, it's not going to do anything, do any work. This current, under this current project, it's strictly designed, and it falls under the recreation category for a total cost of $4,950. The next project is to place Washington Hall on the National Historic Registry. So the Groveland Historical Society is requesting funds to place Washington Hall on the National Historic Register of Historic Places, and it comes under the category of historic preservation, and the request is for $6,600. The next project, number three, is shade and seeding at the pines. So this project will provide additional seeding and shade areas at the Pine's Recreation Area for people visiting the park, using the playground, or splash pad, and then watching practice games on the small utility field. That comes under the category of recreation and is requesting $21,426. Project number four is Town Clerk Scanning of Documents Project. And so this is a conversion project to digitally transform Groveland Town Reports, records, to be secure and accessible. The project will scan 21 hardcover, 33 softbound, and 46 staple-bound books of Town Groveland annual reports, and it will provide access for town employees and eventually residents to view and research the historical records. That is a request under historic preservation category and is for $33,000. The fifth project is Perry Park Design Phase. This is another design phase project, and it's an effort to restore the park in memorial of historical significance for the purpose of public enjoyment, education, and recognition. During the initial phase, a consultant will be hired to design the improvements and provide cost estimates for the future work, including parking improvements and invasive plant removal. That comes under recreation, and the request is for $30,800. The sixth project is the Pine's Parking Enhancements Project, and the project will provide additional parking and final paving and markings of parking spaces at the pines to improve safety, enhance circulation, and minimize, maximize space while offering accessibility to a town-owned recreational facility. The project would also provide a pedestrian connection between Town Hall Complex Parking Lot and the pines to increase parking and accessibility between both areas. That's a request for 300, oh, sorry, $523,110, and that's under the recreation category. And the last project, number seven, is Shanahan Field Parking. So, Shanahan Field is primarily used by Groveland Youth Soccer, where parking is limited on the site, forcing parents and children to park on the street, creating a dangerous traffic situation. This project proposes to create designated parking and improve the vehicular circulation at the site to provide a safer environment for recreational field users. It also includes drainage, landscaping, and lighting. And that project comes under the recreational category and is requesting eight hundred eighty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. So, that, those are the summaries for the seven projects. Again, uh, fi- uh, five of them are under the recreation category, two under historic preservation. Um, the, the, um, community preservation accounts, uh, have enough money in them to cover the cost of all of these projects if approved at town meeting. But as I say, they need to be, uh, put on the warrant, and that's up to you, and, uh, then voted at annual town meeting on April 29th. So, I'll take any questions that you have tonight.
How much is in the account, and, um, if all of these are approved, how much will be left over when, when, um, after?
Okay, so, the, uh, these are the status of uncommitted funds, uh, on hand, uh, through, um, March, uh, actually through, um, July 1st of 2023. So, open space, which none of the projects are coming under that, is five fifty, five hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty. Historic preservation has seventy-four thousand five hundred and thirty. Community housing has five hundred fifty-two thousand six ninety-five. And then the general fund has nine hundred and eighty-three thousand three oh nine. So, through July 1st of last year, we had through two, a little over two point three million dollars in the fund. Uh, but of course, some of that is restricted to the categories, as I say. But, um, this year, uh, we, um, Groveland took in about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and, uh, with the state match, uh, would add a total of another, um, approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, uh, that means our, our current total of uncommitted funds is approximately three point one million dollars.
So, all the park and projects would be paid out of that?
Yes.
Unrestricted?
Yes.
So that the, uh, historical, um, I guess regist- registry fee of, would come out of that other, uh, restricted funds?
Yes.
Everything else is, uh, unrestricted?
Yes.
Ed, do you have, Ed, do you have any questions?
Um, you know, you're gonna discuss each, like, each, uh, of the seven? On their own?
We're gonna put them on the warrant, that's the decision, right?
We're gonna do that now?
Well, we can make a motion on each one and make a discussion. Is he, he wants us to do one by one?
Is that the preference of the board, one by one or a block?
It seemed to be what Ed was saying. I don't know. I don't mind either.
Make a mo- well, yeah, we'll take them one by one. Go ahead.
So, I'll make a motion for the Community Gardening Design Plan Phase for, um, four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, um, from the Community Preservation General Reserve, FY 24.
I'm taking that.
All right. Ball's open for discussion. Ed, on the first issue, you got anything?
Uh, no, this is the divi- design stage, it's going where the old dog park was.
Yes.
So, seems reasonable under five thousand to, uh, to get it started.
Yep, you got any?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Great idea. Jason?
Got nothing.
Got nothing. Mark? Seems like a good idea. All those in favor? Roll call, Edwood?
Yes.
Smack me in the head.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
All right, that one passes. That was an easy one. Um, second up, we have, um, you wanna make a motion, Kathy?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the, um, six thousand six hundred dollars from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve, FY 24, to be emet- available for placing the Washington Hall on the National Historic Registry. And it says in the small print, "This will enable the society to apply for future historic grants."
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any burdens to being on the national register?
No, no. It's just gonna recognize the building and make, make it easier to apply for third-party grants. Right now, the grants, uh, that have been, uh, received have all come out of CPA funds, so this will open up, uh, potential matching funds, you know, we can match with CPA funds some other external grant.
Would it restrict, uh, who could use it, or the use of the property in any way, or, uh, or affect the, the lease? We have a lease right now.
No, I, you know, under CPA, um, we're required to put a historical preservation, um, restriction on the property. So, that's already in place, or will be in place. So, it isn't really affecting, n- nothing on this article restricts it any further.
Other than you have to maintain the character, you can't, like, paint it purple or something, right?
Yes.
I mean, it has to be historically?
You couldn't, you know, tear it down, you couldn't turn it into, um, you know, s- I mean, you could use it for, basically, you could use it for anything, it just has to be always designated as a historic building.
Gotcha, but it couldn't be a rec center or a, so.
Oh, it could be, but again.
Okay. All right, any discussion, Kathy?
No.
Mark? Ed? Jason?
No.
All right, all those in favor? A roll call, Edwood?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Passes. Uh, Shade and Seeding at the Pines, this project will provide additional seeding and shade at the Pines Recreation Area for people visiting the park, using the playground, or splash pad, and those watching practice games on the small utility field. Is there a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to put on the warrant an article to appropriate a sum of up to twenty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars from the Community Preservation General Reserve, FY 2024, to be emet- made available for shade and seeding at the pines. The project is managed by the Groveland Recreation Committee and the town administrator under the CPA category of recreation. And it says in the small print, "The project will provide additional seeding and shade at the Pines Recreation Area for pis- people visiting the parks, using the playground, splash pad, and those watching practice and games."
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Edwood?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Passes. Next up, Town Clerk Scan Documents. Conversion project to digitally transform Groveland Town Report Records to secure and, for, to be secure and accessible. Project will scan twenty-one hardcover, fifty-three softbound, and forty-six staple-bound books of the Town of Groveland Annual Report. It will provide access for town employees and residents to view and research the historical records. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion, um, to appropriate the sum of up to thirty-three thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve for FY 2024, to be made available for the Town Clerk Scan Documents. The project managed by the Town Clerk and Town Administrator under the CPA category of historic preservation, and it's to digitally preserve, transfer Groveland Town Reports, um, including twenty-one hardcover, fifty-three softbound, and forty-six staple-bound books, and provide access to town employees and residents to view and research historic records.
Third second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Edwood?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Passes. Uh, Perry Park Design Phase, this project is an effort to restore a small park in memorial of historical significance for the purpose of public enjoyment, education, and recognition. During the initial phase, a consultant will be hired to design the improvements and provide cost estimates for future work, including parking improvements and invasive plant removal. Is there a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion to place an article on the warrant to appropriate a sum of up to thirty thousand eight hundred dollars from the Community Preservation General Reserve, FY 2024, to be to made available for the Perry Park Design Phase. The project managed by the Conservation Agent and Town Administrator under the CPA category of recreation, and it's to restore a town park for recreational and historic significance, and also, I think, parking, right? Is this to design some parking in that area too? Yes, we need that.
Third second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Edwood?
Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thirty thousand dollars eight hundred, it seems to be an awful lot, or, just the design phase. So, uh, you're probably talking, uh, at least two, three times that once it gets going, maybe even more. Uh, I, I think it needs to be, uh, relooked at and, um, cut the cost, uh, from thirty thousand. It seems, seems, seems like, uh, way too much, uh, way too much, just in the design phase. And I, I, at thirty thousand, uh, my, my question is, was, uh, has it been put out to bid for, uh, people to bid on the, the design or, or not? At thirty thousand dollars, it seems like it should be.
Mike, uh, what are they gonna do? Are they gonna do a plot plan, a survey? Who, who's gonna come up with the plan? Is that in-house or outsourced? It seems like we're gonna delegate that.
Well, first, when, uh, projects are brought forward, they're not required to put out a bid or anything else. This is, at the most, usually, most projects will get one estimate. And so, on this project, that's what was done. Um, working with the town administrator, a, um, consultant was, uh, requested to put a, uh, design phase, uh, estimate together. But, that doesn't mean that's what's gonna be spent. The, the, all of these projects are up to this amount. So, what happens is, um, if this project passed, then, since it is over twenty-five thousand dollars, it will be put out to bid. When it's put out to bid, um, i- i- in this case, I imagine, you know, we'll go beyond having just one person bid on it, and there'll be at least, you know, uh, three bids obtained in, in a competitive process. So, uh, I, I think that that will take care of, uh, getting the, the best price for it. We did ask, um, the, uh, project folks to, to look at it more closely as far as the scope. They came back with a very good scope, it's very specific. So, we have, we're all ready to put it out for bid, because the most important thing when you put it out to bid, you have to very, have a good, specific thing that you're looking for. So, everyone who bids on it knows exactly what they're doing, and since it's competitive, will get, um, similar, uh, scope pricing from anyone who bids on it. So, I'm, I'm confident, I think the, the entire, um, Community Preservation Committee was confident after this, um, additional update was provided, uh, to us last week, that, um, you know, we probably will get a better price than what's stated here.
What's wrong with the park now? I mean, it seems pretty small to me, and it's not a big use area. So, I mean, it's just, who's parking there, who's using it, and what is it for, other than just aesthetics?
Well, Perry Park was, um, has been a designated park from the, for the town for quite a while. Um, it extends, uh, from the, uh, Civil War Memorial across the street, from the church all the way down, um, total of, um, probably about an acre and a half of land there, uh, behind several houses on Main Street. It used to be, uh, used, uh, for children playing baseball. It, it, uh, had benches in it, it had picnic tables in it, uh, nice trees. But, it hasn't received any, uh, maintenance or any, uh, improvements for quite a long time. And so, it's in, it, it's kind of in shameful condition for a park. And so, um, you know, I, I think it's a good choice to use CPA funds for this, because obviously, we haven't had any other money to put in it, and that's why it's been let go. So, I, you know, I, again, I think the, um, money could be well spent. This is the design phase, so during the design phase is when we're gonna determine, we can determine what's gonna be done, talk to some of the abudders of the property, so, see what their ideas are, and really put together a good plan.
Gonna bring back the baseball field?
Probably not, because of the way it's situated. That, that was before, uh, I, I think it was before King Street was kind of widened there, and it was more, uh, useful as a, as a playground more than just a park.
Let me ask you this, I mean, it's so close to the pines, why would anyone bother to use that when you can just drive?
Well, if, if you wanna.
Down the street and go to the pines, and you, I mean, you don't have any, like, children, you know, jungle gyms or any?
No.
Anything there, so it's like, why would you go there?
Well, because it, it is a park, and it, it, as opposed to, uh, the recreational activities that are going on at the pines, this is maybe is a quiet place to, uh, sit, to do some painting, or enjoy yourself in the outdoors. Some people are looking for that, too.
All right. Anything else, Edwood?
No.
Jason?
Yeah, unfortunately, my experience with the landscape, um, design is, it is extremely expensive. And especially if it's a size, even though it's a small park, it is a rather large area, um, for just a design. I think the most important thing to get is the invasive plant removal plan. Just because it's, it grows out into the street and covers up the signs, and it's gonna take over the park eventually. And it really needs to be stepped up and taken care of. Um, so, I, I think it's a, a good use of the money. And, like you said, it is underutilized. And if we put together a proper plan and execute it, I think it would be very beneficial for the residents of Groveland.
Do you anticipate any, uh, changes in top- topography over there? It's got a slight incline, doesn't it?
Yes. No, I don't believe so. I think it's mo- mostly, um, you know, cleaning it up, uh, a lot of planting, removal of some of the dead trees, uh, planting some new trees, and then, uh, as Jason said, getting rid of some of the invasive knotweed that's growing right along Main Street there.
Why is it invasive? Where does it come from?
I don't know where it came from, but it.
It's not native? Maybe it just grows?
No. Have you ever seen the, it looks like bamboo, almost? And it doesn't stop once it's planted. Somehow, it gets planted there, and then it just takes over. So, eventually, eventually, if it's not dealt with, again, as Jason said, it takes over, it would take over the whole park if we let it.
All right, I didn't know if that was just like ragweed or something. No foil. All right, Kathy?
Yes, I'm in favor of it, simply because I remember when we first came to town, that it was a play area for the children, and it was easy, because for the children, there's a lot of children that live right up that street or within walking distance, and they would play baseball and things there. And now, it's kind of just fallen into like a dust bowl stage, and then we've had the issues with the parking. And so, I think it would be a good opportunity to work with that neighborhood and figure out the parking strategy that's needed for that once and for all, incorporate that and some beautification and some picnic tables. I don't think that the actual implementation phase will probably be that expensive, because we're not gonna build a jungle gym, probably. Probably some picnic tables and some plantings, and it will just further beautify the town and bring this place back to what it used to look like. I mean, I think you remember, we had the basketball court in the middle of downtown, and the baseball field right there, and, you know, it was, it was nice to see the children playing. So, it'd be nice to see families congregating on that little green space if it weren't just a dust bowl. So, I mean, either we do nothing and let it continue to disintegrate, or we do something. Unfortunately, everything right now is expensive. Everything's expensive. I don't think you get anything cheap right now.
Mark.
Good.
Park benches, maybe? Swing set?
Maybe.
Can't have enough of swing sets. All right, roll call, Edward.
No.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I'll go along with it. Wanna see some swing sets, though. Next up, Pines Parking Enhancement. This project will provide additional parking and final paving and markings of parking spaces at the pines to improve safety, enhance circulation and maximize space, while offering accessibility to a town-owned recreational facility. This project would also provide a pedestrian connection between the town hall complex parking lot and the pines to increase parking and access between both areas. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to place on the warrant to appropriate a sum of up to five hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and ten dollars from the Community Preservation General Reserve, FY twenty twenty-four, to be made available for Pines Parking Enhancement, the project managed by the Recreation Committee and the Town Administrator, under the CPA category of recreation. And it will include parking and paving and marking of parking spaces, and provide a pedestrian connection between the town hall complex and the pines. How are you gonna do that? So steep slide.
I'll second that.
Second that. Mike, is there gonna be a staircase? I mean, how do you get from here to there?
No, it'll have to be a handicap accessible ramp.
A zip line.
Though, again...
It's gonna be quite long and have to zigzag up and down a few times.
It won't be straight. I'm sure it'll be back and forth, back and forth, kind of thing.
That's gonna cost a lot of concrete and a lot of money, right?
Yeah, that's why it's not cheap.
So, is that most of the, most of the funds?
Uh, well...
Do you have a breakdown on paving and how much the staircase is gonna be or the ramp?
I don't have that with me, but that was within the, within the project presentation.
So, it's all encompassed there. How many, how much, I guess, how many square feet of pavement are you gonna put down? Gonna cover up a lot of grass? Is it gonna change the character of the pines?
No. The main paving that's gonna take place is down in the pines. There are some areas where they were, we were supposed to add parking spaces, but we never had the paving in there enough money to cover the paving, so that's gonna add some additional spots down.
Is that towards the boat ramp, where it's all dirt and gravel?
No, no, it's down this end more, down more towards town hall.
Now, the dog park?
Hmm, yes, near there. The town administrator might be able to weigh in on this a little bit more than...
So, part of the plan is to engage with an engineer, who would give us a detailed design as to where it would best fit, based upon the topography of the area. So, we're still waiting for final design plans, and that's part of the cost that's being requested with this project.
Oh, not sure where the parking's gonna be?
Where the, I'm sorry, where the...
Additional hot top is gonna go in addition.
Oh, the additional, yes, the additional is the, like we said, it would be maybe, we talked with the highway superintendent angled in parking across from the dog park, or increasing a little bit into the grass strip, where people are parking on top of the curb and putting in parallel, well, parallel parking spots on that location. So, that would be the additional parking over there. And then, we also talked about adding parking where the existing skate park is today. It's all kind of broken up, so lining those spaces and providing additional parking there. But it would be no additional, you know, we wouldn't be going into utility field one, two, or further down, or by the baseball. It would be smaller areas of grassed area that we would be utilizing that, to be honest with you, are already being utilized as parking spaces by people who just park on it, anyway.
Okay. Ed, you got anything?
I know, it makes sense. We're running out of parking spaces down there for some of the lodge events, and need access from the town hall, and this is, this is gonna address all that.
Kathy?
I think it's a great idea.
Jason?
Phenomenal.
Mark?
Good.
I think it makes sense that we connect the town hall. I think people just kind of go over the hill and...
Yes, so, you know, if you...
It's not that great.
If you've been to Groveland Day, when people are dying to park somewhere, and you end up having to park up here, and there's no easy way to get down to the pines without walking all the way around. So, people do it, but, you know, it's tricky.
All right, roll call, Edward.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mark?
Yes.
Passes. Next up, Shanahan Field Parking. Shanahan Field is primarily used by Groveland Youth Soccer, where parking is limited on-site, forcing parents and children to park on the street, getting a dangerous traffic situation. This project proposes to create designated parking and improve the vehicular circulation at the site to provide a safer environment for recreational field users. It also includes drainage, landscaping and lighting. Is there a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to place an article on the warrant to appropriate a sum of up to eight hundred and eighty-six thousand eight hundred dollars from the Community Preservation General Reserve, FY twenty twenty-four, to be made available for parking creation at Shanahan Field. The project is to be managed by the Recreation Committee and the Town Administrator, under the CPA category of recreation, and is to provide parking for the field, which is used by both the Groveland Youth Soccer and the Pentucket Youth Soccer, as well as a soccer camp, too.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mike, how many parking spaces will we get? I mean, from our experience, you know, my kids played there many moons ago, but, I mean, it seemed like a free-for-all and kind of a, park wherever you could, and whether you should or not, park there anyway. So, how many spaces are you gonna get? They're gonna be striped and organized, and is there gonna be an entrance and an exit, kind of a...
Yes, I believe it's about eighty spots.
Eighty? Still have to park on the sidewalk and on the street?
No, there won't be no parking on the sidewalk and the street. I don't know why they have.
Who's driving there?
It's raining.
Must be raining.
It's the highway.
Highway guy?
It's raining.
Ranny? There's no parking on the street? Seems like people do it anyways.
They park on the sidewalk.
It's one of those unenforced things. So, we'll get eighty spots, and there's gonna be lights, like, big lights?
Again, I'll turn it over to the town administrator, who can give a little more detail on the project.
So, there were no plans to add additional lighting to the field, but there would be plans to add lighting to the parking lot itself, to help with security issues, as well as to accommodate some of those dusk-type situations where children are leaving the field, as we did over at Washington Park.
Kathy?
Yeah, I think this, if I remember right, this came up last time, and it's no surprise the cost has now increased, because we didn't act on it then, and things continue to get more expensive the more we wait. And, you know, since I walk around that area during the nice weather, I can tell you that, you know, the cars are parked on the sidewalk, and I get it why, because they're trying to get their children out of the car without putting them in the middle of a street. Not to mention that it's also a street which has two streets converging into one. So, you do have a lot of cars obstructing visibility, and they have nowhere else to go. The parking situation there is, is really, I think, critical. I think it's just a matter of when is an accident gonna happen? Not is an accident gonna happen, it's just a matter of when is that accident going to happen? With that many cars converging on that small area and nowhere to park, everybody, it is a free-for-all right now.
I think that the, the way that the site is laid out, very inefficient parking, because there's no designated spot, so, you know, perhaps there's room for forty-five or fifty cars currently, because people are just parking wherever they can. So, it's gonna increase the actual number of designated parking spots, including ability for HP parking spots there with, you know, up to eighty designated spots.
Have, have we heard anything about the property line issue next door? Has that been resolved?
Yes, as far as we know, it has been resolved. That was a big question that the CPC had, too.
Do we have, like, a written down on paper saying it's definitely been resolved? Because I would hate to spend all this money and have an issue with that.
Mm-hmm.
So, the one thing about the property line issue is it does not impact this project whatsoever. It's a civil issue between two property owners, so it has nothing to do with our project, and it has nothing to do with the proximity to our project. It was only identified because we had surveyed the property, and in surveying the property, we realized that both private property owners are encroaching upon town land. So, this would not have anything to do with our project.
Seems to me you still need more parking. I mean, has anyone considered maybe moving the sidewalk back and add, and just allowing parking adjacent to the road going in there? I mean, the field's pretty big, you could cut into it. It seems to me two hundred people go there for soccer events, you know, eighty-car parking is still problematic, so it might solve the parking area, but it's not gonna solve the parking issue. But, it's not part of this project, so, one step at a time. But, if it was up to me, I'd rip the sidewalk up, move it in twenty-five feet or thirty feet, and put some more parking on the street. That's where people are gonna park anyways.
Well, we, you know, once this project is done, depending, again, upon how popular the use of the field is, maybe there will be more work required.
Big enough buffer area around the soccer field, there's plenty of land over there. Anyways, all right, anything else? Roll call, Edward. Yes?
Yes, right now, is, can you hear me okay, Dan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Right now, there's parking for forty-five to fifty cars, you know, parking lot, Mike just mentioned that. You're gonna increase it to eighty. They're increasing parking from fifty, approximately fifty to about eighty. That's thirty more vehicles. You're spending eight hundred and eighty-six thousand. It's two hundred and nine thousand per parking space. It seems a little ridiculous to me. Second of all, this came before the CPC committee last year, for a little over five hundred thousand, and it cut out the lights last year, and the removal of some trees, and got probably about four hundred and fifty thousand. Now, we're talking about eighty, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand. And you, I mean, I'm against them cutting down trees, vibrant trees, that the garden club put in a few years back. I know they're gonna plant some more, but I think with a proper design, a different design, you could leave the, you could leave the trees that are up there and work around those. And I just fear that what's coming down the pipe, is you're putting, if you're putting lights in the parking lot, for long, there's gonna be a request to light the field. And it, it's gonna happen. It may not be next year, but that's gonna happen. And at the present time, you don't need lights, because the field is not being used at night. It's too expensive a project in order to be refought. As far as the, as far as the parking on the street, on, on Main Street, on the one-way section, I remember when that was two ways down there. The cars parked on the side of the road, there has never been, there's never been an accident down there, there's never been a near accident, it's all, well, this is, this might happen, this might happen. But it's the simple solution, if they're parking on the sidewalk, and I see, I don't see any people parking on the sidewalk, tag them. You tag them once, give them a parking ticket, and they're not gonna do it again. They're gonna still park on the Main Street side, because they can walk around the backside of the fence, and it's quicker. They're not gonna park, they're not all gonna park in the, in the parking lot. And I think for, for just, just an increase of thirty, thirty vehicles, again, you're talking two hundred and nine thousand plus per parking space, going from fifty to eighty cars. And I think it's just a, a waste of money, I think it could be done a little cheaper. It, it was, last year, it was, it was three hundred thousand dollars left. So, I think they can do it cheaper than what they're, what they're asking for now.
Mr. Chairman?
And I, I wanna, I wanna vote no one.
Could we just...
What's the point of order?
Well, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're back on discussion, because we were in the middle of roll call, when Ed went into a discussion. So, we're gonna have to rewind, and we're in discussion again? Is that what we're at?
Yeah, we're in discussion again. My mistake, I didn't know we were done, so I just thought we were done.
No, I understand, no, it's understandable.
If there's more to be discussed, then that's fine.
Well, yes, because I guess, before Mike speaks, I just wanna say, you know, one of the reasons that I am supportive of this is that we pushed it off last year, and no surprise, it costs more again. You keep kicking this down the road, it's not gonna get cheaper. Get used to that. The second thing is, the point was made, that although there might be spaces for forty to fifty cars now, the way, the haphazard ways people pull in, they block off access to those spots, and then the parking spills out into the roadway, and it is a hazard, and it's dangerous. And the town has gotten busier on the roads, not less busy, so, in keeping up with the times and keeping up with safety, and it's the police that are saying they need lights on an empty parking lot, to make sure there's not something in that lot, you know, that's wrong. That's why we have the parking lot at Washington Park lit up at night. You know, there's streetlights on it all night, so that they can drive by and make sure everything's okay. I mean, that's just common sense. You don't put a parking lot at the rear of the soccer field into complete darkness, what if something happened and someone was stuck there? We wouldn't know. So, I just think that we keep pushing this off, saying it costs too much, and it keeps getting more expensive. So, we should take a moment and pause and decide, once and for all, are you gonna let this haphazard parking continue until, you know, somebody decides to do something intelligent about it? Or are we gonna do something intelligent about it?
Are we done with discussion? Mark?
I'm, I'm good.
You're good. Ed, you got anything else? Before I roll call. Jason?
No, I mean, I think it's a necessity that we need to fix the parking that's over there, so it's...
there, so it's functional. I mean, it's just not functional the way it is now. And unfortunately, it comes with a hefty price.
I think we need to do something, but I also see Ed's point, we're going to pick up thirty spots for eight-hundred and something thousands. I know we're going to get lights, but I don't know that lights are critical over there.
There'll be drainage too.
Drainage?
Yeah, because anything over twenty thousand square feet, you have to have drainage, stormwater management.
Maybe you're better off with gravel because it's built-in drainage. I don't know. Roll call, Edward.
No.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Self, no. Mike?
Yes.
Passes. Three-two. That's it.
Yeah, so I just wanted to remind Groveland residents to pay attention. There's seven warrant articles that are going to be on town meeting. If you have questions about how to vote on these things, review what's already been said tonight. And also certainly get in touch with the town administrator, we can provide answers and hopefully pass these critical projects that won't happen unless we fund them with CPA funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Number ten, vote to close the warrant on March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four at noon.
A motion?
What's that all about?
We have to close the warrant.
We can close it tonight too. I just know that there's, there was a group that was interested in filing a citizen's petition and I was trying to give them a little bit more time, but at the same time, they might not want to move forward with that citizen's petition. So I was just making it so, again, they had more time. But if the board would like to close the warrant tonight, you're more than welcome to do so.
Is time of the essence or can we give more latitude? I don't want to, you know, slam the door on anybody. Is there any reason why we need to close?
We could wait. The only issue with waiting is that we need to get our warrant approved by town council, so we need to go through it, we need to draft it, we need to make sure recommendations are made by the boards, the finance board, the board of selectmen. So it is somewhat of a time crunch, but at the same time, if you wanted to wait until April eighth, our next meeting, we could wait until then as well. So it's up to the board.
Does it put pressure on you and town council to drop what they're doing in the eleventh hour?
Somewhat to wrap, to pull it around. That's why I figured that March twenty-ninth, that last day of the month, essentially at noon, because I know that the clerk has office hours end at noon to give them enough time to submit within business hours and make sure that everything was submitted if they decided to move forward.
All right, and they're aware of this?
Yes.
All right, so it's been disclosed, they have notice. If they want to act, they have time to act. They have four more days from tonight, so if you want to move on it, move on it. So I make a motion that we close it on the twenty-ninth.
At noon.
At noon.
Yes, second. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Edward.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes? Mike?
Yes.
Passes. Number eleven, review of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five on the bus.
Mr. Chair, you'll see, I won't take up too much of your time. You'll see on the revenue side of things, we did go through this at a prior meeting for what we were projecting in terms of new growth and two-and-a-half percent and what we were expecting to take in on local receipts. So that hasn't changed much. The only thing that changed from the first time we reviewed is that we added an additional line that we labeled election expenses because we are able to get a reimbursement from the state to accommodate for those expenses. So you'll see that additional three-thousand dollars that wasn't originally in the spreadsheet that you had for your revenue. So again, we're looking at bringing in about five-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars for fiscal year twenty-five in addition to what we bring in. So we're looking at a total estimated revenue of twenty-three million, three-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine. And as we discussed at the last meeting, a lot of the driving factors are still the same. Nothing has changed. It's retirement, the twenty-seven percent increase, insurance, health insurance came in at a nine percent increase, the trash contract increased eleven percent, et cetera. So I did want to address that I did have a meeting with the council on aging director about the salary adjustment request for the assistant director. And so I did go back over the budget and I also discussed the Collins Center study with Mary Akati, who was a woman who we brought in from the Collins Center to help us with that effort. And so we did an analysis on the revolving fund and some other funds and we were able to say that the revolving funds that the COA has are funds that can carry over from fiscal year to fiscal year. So those reserves have been slowly growing and since we've accumulated a lot of the salary line items in our operational budget, which was not something we had done, a lot of those salaries were paid for by the formula grant, that we would be able to reduce their expense line item and their vehicle maintenance expense line item and add six-thousand dollars into the assistant director's salary line item. To give you an idea of what the reserves are, they're looking at about fifty-four-thousand dollars in total in their account that they're able to utilize. And then additionally, we did note that when we went back over, we did make an error with the item that we had just talked about with the election expenses. So the clerk had only requested the twenty-four and we increased it to twenty-seven, which is a three-thousand-dollar reimbursement. So we increased it on both sides. So if you reduce that and include the one-thousand dollars, because we did have a conversation with the town clerk and the police chief, and we do need to have a detail at the November election, so that's about a thousand dollars. So leaving that thousand dollars in the election line item, if you remove the two-thousand-seventy-six from it, you're able to get the assistant director at the sixty-six-thousand, six-hundred-and-eight that's requested without dipping into any other departments and/or weighing any of those other positions in direct correlation with another position. So that's the only other amendment or recommendation I would make. Otherwise, the budget is in your packet. It was sent to you on Friday. I gave you the electronic version as well as the spreadsheet version that was presented by the finance board. The finance board approved the budget except for that last recommendation, but it does not change the bottom line. We're looking at ending with about three-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars.
So is it your opinion that you agree with, and we heard it in public comment, that compensation should increase for that position?
Yes.
Okay. And does this need to go back to finance board for courtesy or they've already made the recommendation on that?
It would go back for a courtesy vote.
Okay. All right, so that's somewhat been tentatively resolved.
Mm-hmm.
What's the deal with the school budget? Is that the, you know, the white elephant in the room?
The school came in at a two percent increase over last fiscal year.
Oh, two percent.
Some good work here, huh?
Wow. I'm shocked. All right. Questions, Kathy?
I'm, I'm pleased that
Good job.
Yeah, I'm pleased that we're able to come out for two things, with a balanced budget. And I'm pleased that we're able to at least give a two percent raise. And I also note that last year, we did give out significant wage adjustments, which were necessary on the non-union side. So the two percent may not be all that I would like to see, but at least it helps the adjusted wages now try to keep pace. And I mean, inflation right now is outpacing everything. So we're never going to be able to keep pace with inflation, but as we all know from experience, what goes up must come down at some point a little bit. I did note that all the volunteer stipends have been eliminated. I assume that is a necessity in order to balance the budget. So in order to provide the raise for non-union, and we already vote on the union contracts, in order to bring this whole thing into balance, volunteer boards, stipends were eliminated. And that's, that's the unfortunate part of this whole thing, is that we never come away with everything. We know that. And that's one of the things we talked about prior to this meeting at the trash and recycling meeting, that we're going to push forward with a proposal that will take a part of the cost of the trash contract, the tonnage cost, and place it outside the tax rate into the hands of the taxpayers. And that proposal, we're working on now because that contract far exceeds two-and-a-half percent every year. And it's not, from everything I've researched and read, there's no end in sight. The cost of trash disposal is going to escalate so much faster. And if we keep all of that cost in our town budget, the place we'll, we'll see the most harm will be right here in this town building with, you know, no raises or layoffs or this and that because you just can't keep up with that kind of a budget. It's, it goes up too high. So we're going to try and keep the pickup cost in the, in the budget when we go out for the next proposal, but the cost of tonnage placed into your hands as a taxpayer and pay for what you throw. And that will help hopefully in future years. Doesn't help this year. Trash went up, what, twelve, thirteen percent? It's almost a million dollars, so it's a, it's a tough cost that the specialist that came and spoke to us, she said, wouldn't you rather spend that money on something else than trash? And I said, yeah, absolutely. Rather spend it on our town services and things that we can all enjoy. And so hopefully, we're moving in ways that will free up some of the budget from some of these escalating costs that just chew up too much of the budget year after year. But otherwise, I think I agree with the recommendations from our town administrator and the other prior recommendations from the finance board. I went through the budget book. I saw that budgets, the town departments, you know, they wanted more, they needed more, and we weren't able to give everything. So everybody gave up something and I appreciate the work of the departments. Even doing the worst-case scenario, I hated that, that that had to happen. And I think tonight, it'd be good to do some kind of a preliminary vote so that all of our town employees know that we intend to keep them if they'll stay with us because I don't want them to fear for their jobs like that. Hopefully never again.
All right, Jason?
Yes, I just want to make sure that the administrative assistant salary is going to be adequate. Because originally, when we approved that position, when you became the town administrator, that was approved at seventy-five thousand. You're going to be able to find somebody that's high caliber enough to assist you since we're losing our town planner and you're going to be taking on a lot of that role on top of what you're already doing.
I hope so, and I believe that by trying to leave the ten thousand in the town planner line item for consulting services as needed, if a large forty B were to be proposed or if a larger subdivision came through, they would be able to handle that specifically and then that would supplement that side of things.
Have you been into contact with the planner that you originally was going to replace Annie with recently? Because I know that the board kicking that down the road really soured that deal. And unfortunate, it's really unfortunate because that was a seamless transition, which is very difficult to put together, given that we have a strict budget. So I'm very sorry to see that. And I, I really hope that the seventy thousand dollars is going to be adequate to find somebody that's going to be able to give you the assistance that's necessary at the caliber that you need. I know that looking at some of the other towns when we originally approved the position, they get paid substantially more at all the towns around here. So I am a little concerned about that. And I understand that when you, when we first funded that position, you opted to take those funds and utilize them to upgrade the IT that we originally had at the time. So I'm not sure that was the best thing to do, but I hope that all works out.
Mr. Chairman, I think maybe for people that aren't so much in the, in the know, like all of us at the table, it'd be good to have a town administrator kind of explain. We often take positions in the town hall and people wear many hats. Over the years, I've watched things shuffle around and I, I, you know, I try to keep up with it as best I can. We had at one point, conservation agent over there and a part-time planner over there and a zoning clerk over here. And then things came together and then it broke apart. And maybe you could give an idea of what you foresee now as the, because it's not, we're reshuffling positions and moving money around to fund things in a way that's more productive for the town going forward. So when we say the word administrative assistant and some other planter duties, we're talking about grants and things that we really need to keep surviving. That's where that's coming from, through the planner position. And moving it into town administrative position makes a lot of sense because then it can be more encompassing in terms of helping out with grants. So maybe you could speak to that a little bit?
I think Groveland has a little bit of a complicated history as to how we came about with the way we are. I mean, we had the three-member board and we had an administrative assistant coordinator, which was originally the position who was essentially the finance director slash town administrator, if you will. So that person really took on a lot more. Administrative secretaries actually became the reason why town administrators and managers exist because those types of high-level jobs were put in existence. We changed to the five-member, we had the town finance director, we had the treasurer-collector, then we added the town planner position, was the planning position that I first took. That position was funded primarily through the operational budget with supplemented funds through the CPC. We showed our value in terms of what planners can do and we reduced the legal ramifications in the budget that we had for that. And then we also were able to bring in at that point in time, over two million dollars worth of grant monies that were for infrastructure projects that would have not otherwise been funded. And the position grew and became what it is today, which is the conservation agent, zoning enforcement officer and town planner. It was not something that the board had expressed interest in continuing with or certain members expressed interest with not continuing with. Since I have a town planning background, I figured that in order to make the position make sense in terms of what the board was looking for and not sacrifice on larger development projects like the MBTA zoning that will be coming down our way, whether it be another forty B and a hundred and ninety-three units, making sure that that gets constructed according to plan, that we're doing site visits, stormwater is adequate, and that the planning board and the zoning board of appeals do have somebody to go to if they need assistance and that we're not utilizing town council for all of those types of advice. And to be able to do that and to give myself additional capacity, I was looking to bring back the administrative assistant role and that we had not funded for the last few years in order to provide that additional capacity and the additional ability to perform those additional tasks. That would mean that the position would not just be an administrative assistant per se, it would be more so with a strategic role and planning and project management and grant writing and things of that nature. And additionally, provide a little bit of administrative support to the planning board for some of those smaller items that would come up to play. So I thought that it was a fair use of the monies to, to go in that direction. If the board disagrees and want to keep a town planner, then we can keep the town planner and I will figure out something moving forward. But it was just that without that option of having that additional support mechanism, which has become a value to myself and my ability to operate, I felt as though it was something that we could accomplish and I thought we could move in that direction without sacrificing the services and/or impacting the town negatively.
We, we voted three-two not to hire the, I guess, a new town planner. It seemed like before the horse, I think Ed would brought up issues about, you know, just procedurally, the existing planner would have to resign and then go that route. But, you know, I listened to, you know, public comments, we're adding, we're expanding staff and yet, you know, we do have some inequity in terms of pay raises. We have contractual employees that get three percent pay raises or five and non-contractual employees get two. So until we I guess adjust for equity, to me, it doesn't seem fair that we're adding another position until we take care of the gaps in our, you know, our payroll. So I don't know how anyone else feels about that, but, you know, shouldn't be, shouldn't be that inequity, you know? And we can't chase inflation, you know? Inflation goes up, well, the taxpayers don't get pay raises if inflation goes up, you know, X, five percent, eight percent, ten percent. So, you know, we're all in the same boat, tighten your belt, so if the taxpayers only get a cost of living adjustment of, you know, three or five percent and inflation's eight, then, you know, I guess everyone's taken a hit. So we can't chase that rabbit around the track. So I don't know that now's the time to expand. Maybe there's a middle road and it's a part-time situation, you know? I just started off with a part-time planner, now I was opposed to it, it morphed into a full-time planner. It morphed into a full-time planner. Um, went from a, um, finance director, um, which was a treasurer, to a town administrator and a treasurer. So, we're, um, taking what was one job and turning it into two, and I'm, and I'm seeing it, seeing that, um, clone itself. So, uh, I know the timing's right for that. Jason?
In all fairness, when you talk about the contractual obligations, um, when the call-in study was done and we, uh, we upgraded majority of our employees, the people that were under contract still had a two percent. They didn't get adjusted because they were under contract.
Yeah, but we haven't caught up on it.
Still working on it, and-
Well, that's what I'm saying. Let's finish the job.
That's part of what we do. That's part of what we did when we renewed the, uh, the contract for the contract, contractual employees.
Mr. Chairman, can I say, can I just say something? I mean, um, coming from a, a statistical background, I know that it's, it's far too easy to find statistics to prove your point, you know? Mean, median mode, differences, you know, all kinds of little words, fancy words to do. But, the thing that speaks the most is if you looked at last year's comparison of what we were able to do for the non-union employees compared to the towns around us, it was pretty significant. We did anywhere from forty percent and over increases, and that has not been done in the thirty years I've been here. And it was supported by an override vote of the taxpayers. And I feel that when, when you start to categorize something as creating a new position when that's not what's happening, I think that's very misleading. We have people who are wearing several hats, okay? And right now, we have our town administrator making a very generous offer, um, because of her background in planning, to still help out on a lot of that. The planning and the grants that brought in over two million dollars to this town, saved this town two million dollars, continue, will continue to save this town. These positions have paid for themselves so many times over. And I'm not saying that the other positions aren't worthy. They're certainly worthy. The, the way people are taken care of and receive services from this town is incredible. And anybody I speak to always praises our town services and says how grateful they are for the town services. But, I mean, I don't know. I'm not good with cliches, like, you know, cut off your nose, it's spite your face. I don't know what really applies here. But, the bottom line is, we're very short-staffed, and we're putting all of this weight on our town administrator. And that town administrator's carrying the weight, but is saying this would be beneficial to the town and would allow more to get done, more grants to be written. One of the biggest arguments against a town manager that I heard was, "Why not just hire a grant writer?" Well, guess what? We have pay dirt here. We got it both, okay? And if we're going to cut back on the town planner and shift funds over, over towards the town administrator office where it can be utilized on both fronts, then I'm all for it, because I'd like to let the employees here give us their input. They're here every day, okay? There's no one-size-fits-all. There's no, "Okay, don't do anything until we do this." No, I don't agree with that kind of thinking. I think we move forward, we make good decisions, and don't be afraid to defend them. I think we voted fairly decent contracts for all of our town employees, and anyone is welcome to inspect those contracts. And if you're really upset about what we've given to these town employees in the contracts, go ahead, write a letter, we'll read it. But, I feel that we gave fair amounts to our town employees, and even with the contracts, the contractual employees are still not paid as much as many of their counterparts. But, that's the same for most of our town employees. But, within our town, I think there is a sense of equity. And I think that when issues are brought up, I watch our town administrator review it, get expert advice, come back and give us good recommendations, which she has done tonight. And I guess I don't understand why we would not follow her recommendations when it comes to the issue of the town planner position and where to go with it. She's reacting to the fact that three members of the board didn't want to hire a town planner, and I know there was a logistics part of it, but there was also just some questioning about, "Well, do we really need that as a full-time position?" And now, she's morphing it into something more productive. I, I mean, at least give it some consideration. Let it go before the town meeting. Let's, let's see what the sense of the public is. Um, again, I, I like to take input from everybody, but I don't think there's any one-size-fits-all rule when it comes to the town budget, you know? We try to be fair. We do the best we can. Everybody's not always going to be happy with all the decisions, but the votes I've made and the decisions I made, I made in the best interests of the town.
Ed would.
Yes. A couple of things. Uh, I, I take note of what Jason said, that all time, all towns around here, uh, are offering more compensation for an administrative assistant. But, in, in expanding that, all towns around here have an administrative assistant for the Board of Selectmen, whether it's full-time or it's part-time. So, I, I would suggest, on this seventy thousand, uh, hire a part-time administrative assistant for the Board of Selectmen. That person could take some of the workload off of Rebecca. For instance, issuing the permits, uh, the, the liquor licenses, the used car permits, they, they can handle that. That person could also handle the rental of the, uh, the field down at the pines, and also work directly for the Board of Selectmen. And it's something that we had talked about before, that, that the Board of Selectmen needs an administrative assistant. And I, I, I just don't think that at, at this time, we can add a benefited position. We could, we could try a part-time position, administrative assistant, working for the Board of Selectmen, which would take some of the workload off. That person could also do the, uh, bi-weekly warrants and for, uh, for the selectmen. Uh, and, again, taking workload out of, off of the town administrator. Uh, I, I just don't think that a, a benefit, another benefited position, uh, with benefits is the right way to go now. Look, I know that the, the maximum you can raise the budget every year is two and a half percent, but there's no law that says you have to. The townspeople are paying enough in taxes. They need some sort of a break, and they can't keep adding employees, we, even though we do know it. Take a look around Groveland and look at how many houses are up for sale. Tremendous amount of them. The people cannot afford the taxes. And that's, that's the reason a lot of them are leaving town. Uh, I just don't think this is the time for another full-time position. Thank you.
But, can I just clarify? It's not a new position. It's either the town planner full-time position or this position. That's what I'm proposing. If the, the board does no longer want a town planner who's eligible, eighty-four thousand dollars a year, has a benefit, we're saying, "We'll reduce that line item to ten thousand for a consultant, not a new employee, a consultant from time to time, and move that monies into administrative assistant line item." If they don't want to do that, then let's keep the town planner position and don't give me the administrative coordinator position. I'm, I'm, all I'm asking is one or the other.
Can you clarify for me anyways? Um, is this no position, uh, would you characterize it as a, an executive-level position? Is it, you know, what I want to know is, and I think it might speak to what Ed's concerned about, is, and we, years ago, we used to have a, an assistant to the Board of Selectmen, Nancy, years ago. Um, and I think the purpose for having a, um, an assistant is to get the clerical work off of your plate, because, you know, want to use you for the, your expertise and not necessarily filling out permits and things that might be of lower, you know, skill set and clerical in nature. So, how much of your job is clerical in nature and you could carve it off to somebody that might be less money and possibly, uh, speak to, uh, you know, maybe a nineteen-hour or less position? I mean, uh, uh, another full-time position is salaries, pensions, benefits, and we already ha, we're in the hole on our, um, unfunded benefit obligations. We're at rears.
Mr. Chairman?
So-
Can I just say something?
Yeah, I want, I want her to ask, answer the question, Kathy. No, wait.
There's been some misinformation put out.
Wait, 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 wait. No, you can debate it.
Point of, point of information that we have not, as a board, this year, discussed that we need an administrative assistant. Not ever, okay?
No, but it's-
No, and personally, I don't need anybody administratively assisting me. I can take care of myself and show up for the meetings. I don't need someone calling me up. I don't need somebody copying things for me. I'll make my own copies. I don't need a clerk, okay? And I don't want to cost the taxpayers any money as clerk or assistant on a Board of Selectmen. Nowadays, people don't have clerks. They take care of their stuff. They send their own emails, answer their own phones. I can do my own emails. I can answer my own phone. I know when my meetings are, okay? I'm, I'm fine with the setup now. Years ago, that was the setup. They photocopied everything and stapled it and handed it out. I don't need that. I think the modern-day Board of Selectmen doesn't need that.
That was, so to answer your question, there is a lot of administrative work, but at the same time, a lot of the, what happens in my office is multifaceted. There are different things that are happening all at once. And in addition to that, with the planning elements of things, so like, for a grant application, like, so having somebody there that has the expertise of understanding how to write and how to help facilitate that process. They would start and initiate that process with me. We would sit there, we'd brainstorm. We say, "Okay, what is it that this project needs? We need the dam to be corrected. Okay, here are the major highlights that I want you to focus on." They would go forward and they would put together that application. Then, they give it to me. So, then that, the bones and the structure of something are already accomplished. So, then I can then take it, and then I can put on the extra expertise that I offer in terms of making that a better application. So, it's not just answering the phone, correspondence, or submitting, you know, permits and things of that nature. It's a little bit more higher level. But, there is a lot of administrative work in there as well. I mean, Selectmen Watson's not wrong. I mean, between the field use permits and making sure that people have their numbers and making sure that the fees are collected, a lot of administrative work i- is tied into that as well. Um, but to divine amount of hours, it's, it's a little tough, you know, when the packets need to be done, or if there's things that need to be written, or letters on behalf of the board, or things like that. So, I mean, I can try and qualify, quantify that a little bit more, if that's something that the board would like. But, again, I want to reiterate, this is not a new position. If you want me to continue to do what I'm doing, then that's completely fine. But, I need somebody in the planning role to help me with the grants and to help me with the development projects, because there's far too much at stake when you're having subdivisions where, you know, residents are either attacking the developer or the developer is yelling at the residents. And the town helps facilitate that, and we try and make sure that they understand that they're following the rules, so you cannot attack them, or they're doing the right thing, and you need to listen, that we all play by the rules. And that's a full-time job to communicate with drainage. Are you making sure that the, the subdivision isn't leaking off into the wetlands, or you're making sure that things are happening? So, there's a lot that goes on. So, if it's not going to be the town planner, and I'm going to take that on to, to try and help facilitate, then I'm all for that, because I don't want the town to suffer. But, I'm going to need some support, and it's not going to be a part-time person. So, I don't want to add any new position. I want that very clear. I'm not adding one benefit to this town. I'm asking for either a town planner or an administrative assistant. That's all I'm asking for. One or the other. One benefit-eligible person that already exists today, that you're already paying benefits for and have been for the last three years or since I first started. That's all that's being requested. No new position, no new growth, none of that.
So, it's a title change? You're going to eliminate the town planner?
If that's what the board would like to do, I will do that, if, that we can move in that direction. If it's not, then I'd like to keep the town planner.
So, can you talk to the numbers? Does the salary increase and do the benefits increase in our, uh, obligations, uh, and-
Nothing increases.
Mine items.
There's a three thousand dollar, three thousand nine hundred and nineteen-dollar surplus now between the, the move to that department and the economic development department. So, there's three thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars that we can use elsewhere in the budget, and if we accommodate that change. And it does not impact the benefits because the benefits already exist today.
So, this is a lateral move of sorts?
Exa, and in-
In terms of numbers?
Exactly.
So, what would you change in terms of the skill set? I mean, it's going to be the same person or the new title? Can you clarify that for me?
Not necessarily. They would be a little bit more clerical in nature, so they would do a little bit more administrative, but not to the point of just answering a phone and writing an email. They would need to be able to problem-solve and understand that when things come in, like if I can't answer the phone and this is an issue about a subdivision, how some of those things work. So, they wouldn't necessarily be a planner, but they wouldn't nece, they just would have the skill set of problem-solving, project management. Project management is, is the great explanation. That's what, that would be the core focus of that individual.
And is it going to be a new person? We're going to, we're going to post?
We have to post it.
We have to post it. So, we'll get somebody with a, a skill set that'll meet these new, I guess, job requirements, and that, and we'll, you'll interview them and they'll come before us. If we want to talk to them, we can do that.
You are the personnel board, a hundred percent.
All right, Ed would. Does that address your concerns?
I wonder if you can hear us well.
Ed, does that address your concerns on terms of adding additional personnel? Seems like a lateral move, and she said that it was going to free up three thousand bucks.
Uh, somewhat.
All right, Mike, you got something?
I, I agree with that, but Beth was up there first.
Beth, would you like to chime in?
Yes. Regarding the, um, assistant for the Board of Selectmen, although Kathy feels that she can do her own emails and write and make her own copies-
Mr. Chairman, you have, Jack, point of water, point of water, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on. What, what, no, what's your po-
No, Mr. Chairman, it's not public comment right now, and the town clerk is taking-
No, we're, we're in discussion. We can, anyone can enter into discussions.
Mr. Chairman, we're in a board discussion, and I don't intend to entertain personal attacks from another town employee, so please, no, please.
I don't think it's personal. It's general in nature.
Yes, it is. My name is being, excuse me.
It's a response back to your comment.
You don't need to respond. This is a board discussion. So, Mr. Chairman, again, can I please ask you? This is a board discussion. We're not asking other people in the audience to weigh in. Come on, please.
No, no, stop, 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 stop. Please, 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 please. All right, um, I think it's within my discretion. We can, we can, uh, we can supplement and we can, uh, listen to people. And routinely, we say, "Hey, Mike, what do you think of this?" And so, your opinions are welcome here. Let's keep it generic in nature. If you don't think any board member should do something or something, but let's just, we're talk, and I want to narrow this to the scope of, we want to change a position that existed to a new position with a new skill set, from what I'm hearing. So, what do you got to say about that? Whether that's a good idea or a bad idea? That's our narrow issue, and I'd like to keep it narrow.
That the residents of the town of Groveland don't have a person to communicate with when they have problems in the town. That is part of what this new position could be about, if it's considered an administrative position.
It could be.
But, there needs to be some outlet for the residents when they call to get answers to their questions. When they want to talk to the Board of Selectmen, there is no person for them to contact and speak to, to leave a message, to get their points across.
Okay. Can I, can I ask? Could that job descrip, description entail, encompass that? Because I remember the way it was, and I liked it where you, you know, you didn't have somebody necessarily going to Denise, or Greg used to work here. Greg was, did everything. But, you go to Nancy, and she kind of knew everything that was going on, and you had a liaison. Is that part of this?
Yes.
It is. That would be part of the job description. Customer service, basically.
Exactly.
Okay?
People constantly forward me calls when they call the clerk's office and they want to know what's going on. So, I do, I, I do offer that liaison type of, of, of function for the board. Not all the time, and yes, I'm different, so I guess if that's a problem, I'm sorry. So, yes, you are correct. That is what the position would do. They would definitely help and facilitate that, and to be the, the, the go-to for the Board of Selectmen, if that's what the board wanted.
And I think it's important, because that's not necessarily your best use of time.
Agreed.
With your skill set, to be working on some bigger, frying bigger fish, okay?
Understood.
So, you know, if somebody wants to call up and, "How do I get ahold of somebody?" Point the direction to go talk to the planner board, or, you know, go see the clerk, or, you know? People have just general questions on how do you meander through the system, right?
Yes.
And I don't know that a town administrator ought to be that person. That's, you know, it's-
But, it's mostly those who wish to contact.
Because that takes you off your, you know, knock on your door, you know, forty interruptions in a day. And I don't, I want her to work on what she's working on.
Agreed.
So, if that's going to be part of the new position, seems like a good idea. It seems like a good shift.
Yes, that residents who wish to reach out to the Board of Selectmen have a contact that they can speak to and they wish to reach out. And right now, they don't have that.
As long as it's part of that. I want to take that off your plate, and it's nothing against you. It's just work on grants and big numbers, big things.
The reason I started is because I do try very much to open my door to anybody, and I know that things have been very busy. So, yes, I, um, I got sidetracked, but yes, it very much-
You opened the door, but it's probably not beneficial to you and the town that you're answering everyone's question.
It can be difficult at times, yes. Thank you. Do try my best.
Thank you. All right, are we good, Mark?
Yep.
All right, so what do we do?
Could we take a preliminary vote on the omnibus with Rebecca's recommendation on the Council on Aging, and then wait and the finance-
You want to, you want to split this? Bye for Kada. Go ahead. What's your motion? Go ahead, what's your motion?
Okay, well, it's the same bottom line.
The same bottom line.
But we're changing, would you just walk me through? I don't have the numbers written down.
So the change would be to reduce the elections line item from the twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty to twenty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-three and to reduce the.
I'm still finding the elections. I found the town clerk, okay. No, where's elections?
It's the last one with the asterisk.
I got you with the asterisk, that's so obvious. Okay, so you're taking the twenty-seven thousand and doing what with it?
I'm just reducing it to twenty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-three.
So twenty-seven seven fifty to twenty-five?
Six seventy-three, seventeen.
Six, seven, oh, and seventeen cents? Really? Okay. Okay, and?
Then reducing the expense line item to, on the COA, from three thousand five hundred to zero and two thousand five hundred from the vehicle maintenance line to zero. That to, adding those three for a total of eight thousand six hundred, excuse me, eight thousand sixty-seven dollars to the assistant director for a total of sixty-six thousand six hundred and eight dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'm just finding them. They're under education, right? Council, oh, there it is, right under the human services. Okay, so it's the assistant director salary and what would be the new total of that?
So the new total for the director, assistant director salary would be the sixty-six thousand six hundred and eight dollars and eighty-five cents.
Sixty-six, six oh eight, eighty-five. And that was the expenses to zero? Okay, and the vehicle maintenance expense to zero as well?
Yep.
And then the bottom line of the whole thing is?
The bottom line is the same.
Is the same. Okay, so it's revenue neut, I mean expenditure neutral. The bottom line is still going to be the, within what, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars of balance? So we're at an omnibus of twenty-three million, three ninety-one, eight ninety-one and twenty-two cents with those changes as just explained. Is that okay? So preliminary vote, call it, on this budget as it is. So volunteer stipends are gone, contracts are in, two percent raises for all the non-union and these two, these three changes.
What does preliminary mean? Are these numbers subject to change between now and then?
Well, you want to just make it official, but I didn't know.
Be in town, town, the warrants? Are we voting on the warrant article?
Next meeting.
Well, that would be what we would incorporate as part of the warrant article. So this would be an appendix to that with the general line items listed.
Going to vote on the appendix? What would the appendix be?
The appendix would be the line item budget.
All right, what do you think, Mark? Ed, any objections?
Yeah, okay.
Huh?
No.
All right.
No.
No objections?
No, no objection.
All right, move the question.
Move the question.
Your motion.
I did, I thought.
Second.
You did?
I thought I did. Was, did I?
We're voting on the appendix?
Yeah, we're voting on the appendix like twenty-three.
For the whole omnibus? Preliminary omnibus.
The whole omnibus, twenty-three million, three ninety-one.
Clarity, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Need more coffee. Can we put some coffee in the budget?
You look a little tired. Are we going to do a vote?
I need an IV. Anyways, go ahead. Any more discussion? I think we, you know, exhume the horse on this one and beat it some more. All right, all those in favor, roll call, Edward.
Yes.
All right, Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Oh, finally. Appointments of the board, none. Proble of the minutes, Board of Selectmen meeting January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Yes, we were approving those, right?
Yes.
I read those minutes and I make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Was I here?
Um, January twenty-third was, damn.
What was that?
I don't remember.
Yes, you were here.
Let's say yes.
I don't either.
You're on the, you're on the list.
I thought you ran a meeting. What was that?
When did I? It was the short one. It was a very short one.
All right. I don't even see it.
You only let me handle the small change.
Yeah, you were here.
So the minutes of January sixteenth, I made a motion.
All right. That's like a one-pager and a set of numbers. Any discussion, Mark?
Everybody good?
Yep.
Roll call, Edward.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mark?
Yes.
Older unfinished business, do you have any, Kathy?
No, I kind of wove in the trash thing. So we'll, we'll have more information coming out soon. We're getting there. Committee's working.
We funded trash according to the contract.
Well, yes, we're on the old contract still, but we're looking to, to make some changes.
How's your, how's your trash committee?
They're, they're exceptional.
Exceptional, huh?
They're doing great work. We're going to have a flyer in the tax bill mailing with some information. Things are happening.
I think people should just stop producing waste. I mean, it's, you know, the human race produces a lot of waste, you know? Just, um.
Well, that's the whole point of it. But under the other unfinished business, not to, not to, what do you call it? Beat the dead horse or whatever you call the cliche, but.
Instead of exhume the horse and beat it to the horse.
Whatever. Okay, on the Penn Tuckit assessment for this year, I do not think they made the adjustment to take out the money for the Essex Tech students that were being billed for. I just, I feel if the bill's not right, it's not right. Even though it's not a, you know, the other changes netted us out about a hundred and forty thousand. This is maybe what, five thousand or something? Five thousand dollars maybe?
For the students?
The Essex Tech students that were put into our enrollment count this year. It's not a lot.
For the current fiscal year.
Yeah, we're being billed for them still, right?
Yes.
It's about five grand, right? Small. Maybe it's less than that. But it's still, the bill, they know it's not right. They acknowledge it's not right and they say, we'll correct it for next year.
So why'd they give it to us in the first place?
I don't know, because the prior years, they never billed us for those students because we already pay for them in our budget. So Rebecca caught that, she brought it up. They told her they'd fix it next year. So it's kind of up to us, do we want to make an issue of this?
Should we get some money now? We only have what, three hundred and eighty-four bucks to play with? Can we make a, make a stink about it now, get some money?
We could get the money, but it would only be under this fiscal year and fall back to free cash. It wouldn't be something that we would have in the budget.
Free cash, we could spend though.
We can, yep.
How much?
I forget the total. I think it was, with the capital, I think it was like under twenty.
It's, it's not a large, huge amount of money, but.
We got three hundred and eighty-four bucks.
No, no, that's the budget for next year. This year's budget, the assessments, we had, they corrected the first errors, but this error they didn't want to correct.
Why?
I don't know.
Let's make them, fix it.
We did send the letter to the school committee when Selectwoman Cash Nellis did her presentation. They haven't responded or taken any action to that letter.
If it's an error, ask them, my two senses politely, please correct your error. Not our error, don't shortchange me twenty grand. Just do the right thing. Fix it. It's only math, just spreadsheet, change the numbers, do it right or don't do it at all. Garbage in, garbage out. So they should fix it. It's a responsibility issue. I don't think we should get shortchanged a penny on that. Board agree with me?
I do.
All right. Anything else, Kathy?
I'll wait till Selectmen time.
All right, Edward?
No, I, nothing.
Jason? Mark? I don't have anything. Um, other items, not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. Did anything suddenly come up, Mark? No.
Bedtime's coming.
Bedtime, eight-thirty almost, we're going to get out of here. I got a minute and a half.
Okay.
Kathy?
I have nothing under, unanticipated.
Anything old, Edward?
No, nothing recently came up.
Nothing came up? All right, Jason?
Nope, nothing came up.
Good. Town administrator time.
I just have three quick items. Um, one, to let the board know that I was able to partake in the recount effort that the town clerk had to recently undergo. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge all of the hard work and all of the effort of the town clerk and her team. Her team is phenomenal. They were very accommodating. They were great to work with. It was a, a very new and different type of experience, but it was a really great experience. And I wanted to thank her for allowing me to be involved and just say that we are very fortunate to have the town clerk and her team who work very hard for the town. I then wanted to let the board know that we received a hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred dollars from the Executive Office of Administration and Finance for the community compact grant for the MIMAP application, which is our, our GIS system that we work with. This was a regional grant and a great award and hopefully we'll be able to show off the fruits of that labor shortly. And then also to publicly announce that we did receive the earmark from the federal government for about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Congresswoman, Congressman Seth Moulton for water infrastructure replacement. So we were very fortunate to receive that as well. And then lastly, just to, one, invite some of the board members if they would like to meet Congressman Moulton on Wednesday at eleven forty-five. He will be visiting to present the award to the Water and Sewer Commission. And then also, lastly, I just wanted to let you know it's in your correspondence, but we received three citizens petitions. Those will go on the, I'm excuse, two citizen petitions, those will go on the warrant. So you will be able to see them shortly. So just acknowledge that that's what you see in the back of your packet. And those are all the updates that I have.
Thank you. Selectmen time. Selectwoman time. Kathy?
Well, I just wanted to say, I've just started to think about our town buildings and the need to maintain them. And I had a conversation with Claire Walsh, who's in the Historical Commission. And although laughing a little bit, she said that it's possible that the local commission could declare our town buildings historic because they are cultural centers for the town and they've been around for a while. And I ran it by Mike Dempsey. He also laughed a little bit, but said that it would be up to the Historic Commission to consider if the town buildings could be designated as historic. So I thought that after the town meeting, we get through this next hurdles, that might be a time for the Board of Selectmen to kind of look into that. Because then you would be able to, eligible for CPA funds for historic buildings. They're kind of old.
You want that as an agenda item?
I don't think it needs to be agenda item yet. I just wanted to bring it out so that I, because I had the two conversations and just to be upfront about that I was wondering if we could maybe do this. And so after town meeting, that would be a good time for an agenda item. I feel like right now, our agenda's pretty full. Right?
I mean, it's only eight-thirty-two.
You look tired.
But we can't deliberate. I am tired.
I know.
Went to Maine on Saturday and there was no electricity and no heat and.
Oh, shoot.
It stuck up there. So yeah, that was enjoyable.
Oh.